Good morning. At this time, we will call it over to the Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, May 31st. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer is absent. Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Klicka is absent. Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Chairman Ilert?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device and could turn it to silent motor off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do have one presentation to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Joelle and Hoy to join me at the podium. You're already here. Come right on out. We have a proclamation prepared today recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day with an emphasis on the safe use of firearms. As we seem to see on a weekly basis, monthly basis, in our metropolitan area, someone is severely injured or killed by the inability to use firearms safely, either in the home or otherwise. And many times in the home, it's a child who is impacted by the lack of understanding, the lack of initiative in providing gun safety features in that household. So, I'm pleased to present this proclamation in recognition of today and the effort to promote gun safety, firearm safety, in our community, in our homes. So, Joellen, thank you very much, and I know you have a couple of comments to make.
Thank you Chairman Ilert and Commissioners for recognizing National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This day began after 15-year-old Haidia Pendleton, she marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, and then a week later, back home in Chicago, she was shot and killed. And so, on her birthday, June 2nd, her friends created a day, wear orange, to honor her life and celebrate life, and that day has become, the family and friends have extended it to all victims and survivors of gun violence, and is now observed on the first Fridays of June. So, we think of Haidia and survivors of gun violence, and just some information to increase awareness that 96 people in America are shot and killed every day. 60 percent of those gun deaths are suicides, and 1,400 children each year are shot and killed, and a total of 7,000 are shot and injured. So, this is some information, as Chairman said, that many of these deaths can be prevented with responsible gun storage. And I know here in Johnson County, the Sheriff's Department and Mental Health offer free gun locks, and I urge responsible gun owners like myself to make sure to take advantage of that if you don't already have your guns locked and stored safely in the home, because that can save lives. So, thank you all for having us out today.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We do usually take a photo, and I know there's several folks here with you. If they would like to join us in this area here, we're going to need to get close.[263.58][263.58](Laughter). But I assume you've been there before.[267.58][267.58](Laughter). Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. You're fine. Go around.
He's ready to say something.[276.52][276.52](Laughter).
Can I have the three of you back off to the side?
At this time, we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Okay, there being no one to comment during the public comment portion of our agenda, that agenda is closed. There are no notes for the record this morning, and so we will move to our consent agenda.
Item number one, consider approving May 10th, 2018, business session minutes. Item number two, consider authorizing and submitting the SFY 2019 Regional Collaboration Grant Renewal Request to the Kansas Department of Corrections as approved by the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board in the amount of $209,000 for the continuation of the Vocational Training Scholarships Program for juvenile offenders. Item number three, consider authorizing and submitting the SFY 2019 Reinvestment Grant Renewal Request to the Kansas Department of Corrections as approved by the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board in the amount of $320,619 for the continuation of the Day Resource Center No-Cost Substance Abuse Evaluations and Treatment and No-Cost Psychological Evaluations for juvenile offenders. Item number four, invitation for bid number 2018-016, consider authorizing a contract with Mill Valley Construction, Incorporated, for exterior wooden beam replacement at the Sunset Office Building for a total amount not to exceed $130,500. And item number five, invitation for bid 2018-040, consider authorizing a contract with George J. Shaw Construction Company for a staging area improvements on Block 29, Town of Olathe, for a total amount not to exceed $243,800.
Thank you. Is there a Commissioner who would like to have any of these items considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have one of these items considered separately? No one to be heard. It's back for the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Osterhaus?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number six.
Resolution number 032-18, application number SW-CU-3374-GA, consider a request from Brett Young, applicant and landowner, to revise a conditional use permit to allow an oversized accessory building located at 29825 West 159th Street in Section 14, Township 14, Range 22, Johnson County.
Mr. Leipzig.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Commission. I apologize, it appears my computer might have locked up here, but I will give you the overview of this item. This is for a revision of a previously approved conditional use permit at 29825 West 159th Street. It was originally before you in August 3rd, 2017. It's to add an additional 480 square feet of a lean-to to the structural plans. It was approved by the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board on April 25th, 2018, and staff is also recommending approval of this item.
Okay, questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments he or she would like to make? All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this item? No one to be heard. It's back for the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Brown?
Thank you Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 032-18, approving a conditional use permit request to allow an oversized accessory building on approximately 4.65 acres, subject to the stipulation set forth within the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution, and the application as noted. Is there any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk please call the rule.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye.
Motion carried. I might just note, for those who are present, we do have an agenda review. Last week, all these items were presented and reviewed and discussed, but just so, I mean, information has been presented and has been reviewed. This is kind of a quick motion, and no questions, no comments, but that's the reason why. Item number seven.
Resolution number 037-18, consider authorizing the acquisition by eminent domain of a permanent sewer line easement across property in Westwood, Kansas, in connection with a new subdivision development.
Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Bob Ford, Legal Department. A new subdivision is being developed on property of Buddy and Gary and Lisa Bryan's property at 2501 West 49th Terrace, Westwood. The new subdivision development site is a vacant tract formerly owned by the Shawnee Mission School District and now owned by Blue Stem LLC. Several new homes will be built on the property. The new public sewer connection for these new residences will connect to an existing sewer line at a manhole now located on the Bryan's property. The new line will run from the manhole across a few feet of the Bryan's property, across an existing three-foot-wide platte easement, and then onto the new subdivision property. The area needed is near the rear lot line of the Bryan's property, and a site map showing the property and the easement was attached to this briefing sheet, and also a photo of the property near the manhole was attached to the board's information. Last week, during agenda review, we looked at these pictures, and I described the minimal nature of the easement needed. I know the board is always reluctant to use eminent domain in any situation. In this case, I believe the developer and the county have exhausted all reasonable efforts to acquire what's a pretty minor easement. I've been in touch with the Bryan's, I've been out to the property, I left a message for Mr. Bryan as late as yesterday, I'd sent a letter a week or so ago explaining the situation from the county's perspective, inviting them to this meeting if they wanted to appear, and I don't know if they're here or not, but at this point, it's costing the developer money, it's eating up his timeline, and so I think we're to the point where we really need to move ahead with acquiring the easement by eminent domain.
Mr. Ford, the wastewater manhole and the line that will be tied into is a requirement for the development of this property, is that correct?
Yes, it is. The new residences will connect to the existing county sewer system at this manhole.
Okay. Is there another alternative?
I don't believe so, no.
I see, okay. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ford, are any structures affected by this?
No, sir.
Okay. And once whatever work is done, will the property, this corner piece, will it be available to the existing property owner? I mean, are you putting a fence around it, or are you?
It will be, the surface will certainly be available. I don't believe you'll be able to tell, we put a new sewer line in there, I think it'll look just exactly like it does now. Again, there's already an existing easement along this back property line, it's just we have a little gap between the manhole and the existing easement that we have to cross. It's kind of an odd situation.
So, basically, you want to dig a hole and connect?
Yes.
The infrastructure, and then you'll fill it in, and it will pretty much be substantially as it was. The same manhole will be there, or will it be enlarged, or?
Same manhole.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Osterhaus?
Mr. Ford, can you talk about the concessions that we made, that after in your conversations, I know you mentioned some last week, but I think it might be good to mention again, we wanted to move, they wanted to move closer to a fence, I believe, and wanted us to move back some, and we agreed to those?
Yes, we did all that. The landowners were represented by counsel, and he negotiated the easement from, I'm not going to say a large easement, but it was larger than what we have now, and there was also a temporary construction easement, and they were concerned, owners were concerned that it would get into the planter boxes and their sprinkler system, and it would go north of the manhole into their yard, which is very nice. And so, in talking with them, in talking to the contractor, we realized we could pull it back to just about the manhole on the north side, and then do all the work south of the manhole. So, that addressed all their concerns about anything that would be disturbed on their property, and then we removed the temporary easement, we narrowed, we removed the temporary construction easement, we narrowed the permanent easement, and I think it's now like 300 square feet or some, I mean, it's a pretty small area right now. And also, we're digging a trench and putting an eight-inch line, six or eight-inch line, eight foot deep, for a short distance, so it's not any sort of huge construction project.
Well, I just wanted to mention that to make sure that we weren't hitting the planter boxes or the sprinkler system.
Nothing should be touched on their property.
Just the grass.
Or disturbed on their property.
Okay.
Other than dirt.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Brown?
Thank you Chairman. Mr. Ford, as a developer and contractor builder myself, I understand the position that Blue Stem finds themselves in on this. However, I would also just offer the comment that when we're exercising the use of eminent domain as a government, I don't care if it's for an eight-inch sewer line that's two feet long, I've got problems with taking things from people that belong to them, their property. I have issues with that. That being said, can you please walk us through what has been done in terms of an offer to them versus their counterofferback? Where are we in terms of a difference in money to get this done with money and transfer versus eminent domain?
The landowner's attorney sort of had a two-pronged attack on this, or approach. He wanted $20,000 for the easement, or something close to that, and he also wanted us to reduce the easement back to the bare minimum. He was successful in getting us to reduce the easement back to the bare minimum, but he was unsuccessful in getting the $20,000, and you really can't have both. The developer in this case is responsible for acquiring the easement, and in the first instance, is required to go out and negotiate, try to get it, pay for it, and we encourage that. We basically say, it's worth it to you to go out and buy that easement, even if it costs you a little more money, because if you don't, we're going to have to condemn it, it's going to take time, you're going to have to pay the cost of the condemnation, you're going to have to pay it for the appraisers, and it's going to cost you more money. The ultimate offer was $5,000 for this easement, which was rejected by the property owners, and there was no counter. So, they went from 20 to nothing, basically, and have it responded to my inquiries or my messages. And I think I said last week, this sewer line's not the issue. The issue is the adjoining development and the fact that they don't like that, which I certainly understand, and I think we all would if we were in their situation. So, it's not money, and it's not damages, it's just the whole situation that they're facing that they don't like.
Can you, do you know the numbers? What would be considered on a square foot basis? What would be a fair market value for that parcel of real estate?
Well, I've done this for a long time for the county, and if I was negotiating this for the county, it'd be a $500 offer. Legally, under the just compensation formula, before and after value of the entire property, there is no change in the value of this property. This property is a $400,000 residence today. After we put the sewer line in, it'll still be a $400,000 residence, and the owners acknowledge that. They acknowledge that this is not going to affect the value of the property. So, if the county was doing it, I wouldn't offer $5,000 of our money for this project. I have, but it's because I'm spending somebody else's money on this project.
Based on a preliminary, I'm sorry Chairman, is it okay if I ask another question?
Sure.
Based on the preliminary platte, how many lots are scheduled, is Mr. Blair trying to get located behind this property?
I think it's five, it might be six, but it's in that range. He's building along the north-south street, which I think's Belinder, and he's just putting some houses along the street, and I think it's five.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there's no one to be heard. It's back for the commission. You know, under the circumstances, I will support this request. I would hope that negotiations, as we've suggested in the past in many instances, will continue and can be resolved without condemnation, but under the circumstances, there may not be another option. Mr. Allen?
Go ahead and make a motion.
That's fine.
I would move that the board approve resolution number 03718, authorizing the exercise of eminent domain to acquire a permanent sanitary sewer easement across the property located at 2501 West 49th Terrace, Westwood, Kansas.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have often spoke about my hesitancy to exercise eminent domain and the taking of an individual's property, but I also realize that we have to look at these circumstances on an individual basis, and if what Mr. Ford is presenting is accurate, it does not really appear to be a taking of any property, that there will be full access, the value of the property to the property owner does not change, the property owner will actually be enriched more if Mr. Ford's estimates are accurate substantially, maybe not to his liking, and I understand the reservations about potential development on the back, but I almost sense that we have a quasi-hostage situation here, and I'm not comfortable in just voting no on eminent domain in this circumstance, because I think that the developer and staff have done their best effort, and it will be a fair finding for the property owner, so I will support this measure.
Any other comments? Mr. Brown?
One more. Thank you Chairman. I am familiar with Blue Stem Development and Mr. Blair, and I would say that when I came out here, as I'd read this over the last week since we talked last, I've been on the bubble about the use of eminent domain in this situation. I've kind of struggled with that. I would say, based on the information that Mr. Ford's provided, I would be supportive of the use of eminent domain. I would prefer that we continue down the track of trying to negotiate, using this as an instrument, as a backstop, hopefully to get to a point where they would accept that versus the actual exercise, but all of that taken into consideration, and knowing Blue Stem Development and the quality of the residential developer that they are, I feel comfortable that the folks in the end will not be dissatisfied with what ends up in their backyard. So, for all of those reasons, I will be supportive of this motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Well, the motion and the second is before us. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Thank you.
Item number eight, consider authorizing contract extensions with multiple vendors for countywide term and supply furniture purchases in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through November 30th, 2018.
Yes, Robin?
Good morning Chairman Ilert, Commissioners, Robin Lines, Purchasing Manager. The request before you is for contract extensions for the following 10 vendors through November 30th of 2018. Concepts for Business LLC, Commercial Concepts LLC, Encompass Corporation, John A. Marshall Company, Scott Rice Office Works, Spaces Incorporated, Staples Advantage, SSI Furnishings, United Office Products Incorporated, NBA Designs LLC. At last week's agenda review, questions were asked on what furniture purchases were anticipated for the $300,000 request. A memo was sent to the Commissioners earlier this week on Tuesday outlining the anticipated needs for the six-month extension, and a study session will be scheduled with the board in July, as indicated in last week's review. Following that study session, a new solicitation for new contracts will be issued, and with that, I stand for questions.
Robin, if you could elaborate on the memo, as I recall, somewhere in excess of $200,000 of this, $300,000 was for the Monticello Library, the new library that's opening?
Actually, it is for the new Lenexa Library.
Oh, excuse me.
Lenexa.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the anticipated purchases are anticipated in the October-November timeframe, and it includes new study carrels, computer tables, chairs, public seating, book displays, multi-party technology tables and chairs, ADA computers, acoustic privacy screening, teen and youth furniture, and shelving.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Again, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Osterhaus?
I move to authorize contract extensions with multiple vendors for countywide term and supply furniture purchases in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through November 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the contract extension as noted. Any further questions? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye.
Motion carried. Are there any other items to be considered?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move to reports and communications, and Ms. Postock-Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have two items in your memo this week, and then I have a third one to add on a parks update that we received after the memo was complete. So, first is rural comprehensive plan. I'll ask Jay Leipzig to come forward and highlight that for you, our planning director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Development Coats Director. And your packet is the 2018 Annual Review of our Comprehensive Plan. This item was presented to the Planning Commission on May 22nd, recommended for submission to you for review. This is a standard item that we complete every year, although, however, this is the first time I have presented this to you. The recommendation and finding the planning commission's, the plan is still consistent, and it's not obsolete. This is a rural comprehensive character plan. However, next year, we are looking at ensuring that as Overland Park updates their comprehensive plan, the City of Olathe updates theirs, as well as the City of DeSoto, we need to make sure that that plan is consistent with the surrounding fringe cities as well. So, for the currently first year, it's consistent, however, in the future, we'll be looking at this very carefully as well, and consistent with our Development Patterns and Trends Subcommittee that met just recently, and with some of that review that we just completed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Is this a future action item, or is this just information?
Just information for you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right, thank you.
Next item is United Healthcare Mental Health Transportation Project, and I'll ask Tanner Fortney from Mental Health to come forward and highlight this. You will see a video, and this video, portions of it, will seem like a repeat, but it's a longer version of a good news item, and we also have some stars in it that you'll recognize, three of our Commissioners. Tanner?
Thank you Commissioners, Tanner Fortney, Mental Health. I know you're all familiar with this program. I'll just make a couple of brief comments. For anyone that's watching that's not familiar, we've been doing some transportation services at some point at Mental Health since the 1980s, but our current program has been around since about the early to mid 1990s, and it's grown quite considerably during that time. And one of the things that has really set this program apart has been the fact that we use our existing client base at Mental Health to provide transportation to other -- we use our existing client base at Mental Health to provide transportation to other clients so that they can get to work, school, and medical appointments. And I think that most of our clinical staff would have told you for years and years that one of the best, one of the best things you can help as far as recovery is helping to get someone employment. It really has been tremendous. But up until recently, we haven't really had a lot of strong data to be able to explain the success of the program and quantify it. And when United Healthcare approached us about 15, 16 months ago, they really wanted to work with us and look at the program and see what type of results we could have. So we began our pilot in October of 2017, and after the first six months of data, which concluded in March, United had responded to us, and they had compared the group of individuals that were in this pilot, which was approximately 15, and they compared that six-month period that they were in the pilot, and we were providing them the service as opposed to other services they'd used, comparing that to the previous six months of the year. They found that the total medical outlays for those clients reduced by 80%. Now, those are preliminary numbers. They do have, there was some lag in billing, as we always see in healthcare, but that is still very, very substantial, and it's been very, very successful. So the video that you're getting ready to see is, as Penny's mentioned, a little bit longer version of what we saw earlier. I would just like to say a big thank you to United Healthcare. They did this at our request as part of our partnership. They paid for the film crew and everyone that they have to fund this video, so there was no cost for the county, and this is something that's really going to help us to explain this program to the citizens and the taxpayers, and really show and demonstrate what the benefits of transportation can do for our clients.
I give every day. I have a routine every day. My first ride is always the same. I take him to work, school, appointments, mental health appointments.
One of the things that's really important to us here at Johnson County Mental Health Center is helping people recover, and one of the things that we know is that some of the best medicine is work. When people are able to work, they're able to identify themselves as something other than a mental health diagnosis.
Hi, Tyler.
The biggest barrier to work is transportation. And so for many years, we've looked at how we can provide transportation to get people to work and school. We created this transportation program that really relies upon our clients themselves working as drivers and then getting other clients to their employment.
Have a great day, Tyler.
This program had five drivers in three 12-passenger vans. Now, we're doing 130 rides a day. We have 45 drivers, and people are getting out of their apartments, they're engaging in the community, and just, quality of life has improved with just being able to get around.
Hey, John, how you doing?
I work at Price Chopper on 74th, and sometimes I take transportation to doctor's appointments, yes, but I don't do that too much anymore because I'm working.
I'm probably one of the strongest advocates for the mass transit in Johnson County, but the one thing I understand is that the traditional transit approaches don't work for everybody. One of the challenges they have to access to help is transportation. We can't use a cookie-cutter approach to transportation to get people to appointments. Traditional transit is not going to work.
I don't know what I'd do without the transportation.
We'll see you tomorrow, okay?
Yes. It helps me being around people and working, and it structures my time rule. My job is, best thing that's ever happened to me, so I'm going to keep it as long as I can.
We're in our first year of the pilot with United Healthcare. It's a true public partnership, and it's exciting because it's an opportunity for us to do an innovative service, but then also evaluate from a data perspective what impact we're actually making.
I've had lifelong depression and anxiety, and to be able to work with people as their peer is, it melts my heart.
There's just a lot of things that contribute to the health of a member and the well-being of a member, whether it's transportation, food, housing. We want to pilot different ideas to determine how we can do things better across the country, and especially here in Kansas, where we've served Kansas since 2013.
United Healthcare gave us a check for $150,000. They gave us a brand-new Ford Fusion, and with the grant money they provided, I am now full-time employed.
Marshall Pick-up Clinton.
We went into the project thinking that this would have an impact on the members, the people that are getting rides, and what we learned that we didn't expect was that the program is just as impactful for the drivers. These are folks who have received supports from Johnson County, Mental Health, and Behavioral Health Services, and so this is an employment opportunity for them that they take very seriously, and they're very proud of.
I like it because it's therapy for me. It's just, gets me out into the community and gets me interacting with the clients as well as me being a client.
You brought actually purpose back into my life. You made me feel hopeful again, and actually, I can bring it forward to other people, like the clients or even my coworkers, as they do me. So it's a fulfilling job. Thank you.
The clientele, I appreciate that it's a peer driving them. We have drivers with everything from PTSD, being bipolar, depression, anxiety. We understand where that person's coming from. They tend to trust us. We get to know them. They're open with us, we're open with them.
It's not just transportation for transportation's sake, it's the actual impact of those interactions, those personal interactions between the drivers and those clients that's going to set this apart. You can't just replicate these services by contracting them out to a taxi service.
She lives at an apartment complex.
They're working out very well for me.
How long have you been using the service?
Oh, over a year now.
Because the emphasis that we put on employment, 40% of the people that we work with are competitively employed in the workforce. The state average is about 20%, and so I think, yeah, it's significant.
Anytime you can get people to employment, that helps in a number of different areas as far as people's betterment, their quality of life.
This is an opportunity to demonstrate how a good, efficient use of county tax dollars can actually bring back revenue in the form of tax base from people working, improving their lives, and becoming very committed and engaged citizens in their community.
Having United Healthcare come in and support us is huge because what that demonstrates is that they believe that what we're doing is important, and furthermore, they believe our clients are important and are valued.
The Johnson County Mental Health Center, they have been very forward-looking and a great partner of ours.
To me, it's a win-win. It's a win for a county, it's a win for our residents that need our services, and for United Healthcare, it shows that by experimenting, looking at things differently, it can benefit everyone involved.
Thank you, Tanner, for sharing that with us again and giving us that overview, and for the partnership that you formed with United Healthcare to help our citizens. And thank you to our stars that were in the film. Appreciate that.
Let me add, you know, this program obviously is a benefit to all involved. I would put it that way. And so thanks to United Healthcare and our Mental Health Services Agency for collaborating and making this program possible. For our pilot, I would say so far, it's demonstrating much, much success. So, thank you.
Thank you, staff. And then the last item, not in your packet, because we got this information sent by Jill Geller, our Parks Director, Tuesday evening after the memo was complete, and with the help of Yelp, Money.com has identified the best park in each of the 50 states, and Shawnee Mission Park was chosen as the best in Kansas. Although it's the favorite, it's also the most visited park in Kansas, and you know it has 1,600 acres, and most of you know this, but they, it includes boating, fishing, sailboarding, trails, archery range, disc golf, dog park, and equestrian trails. So, good news there. And on that note, she also sent a note thanking the Board of County Commissioners that were present, the Parks Board, the Parks Foundation, and the many community members that came out for the park beach opening this past Saturday. She didn't get an actual count, but if you base it on the number of sunglasses that were given out, 500, or the number of hot dogs that were not gone by 3 o'clock, 1,000, that gives you an indicator. And a good, another indicator is Peyton stayed for several hours, and I had to coax her to leave, so that was another good indicator. Thank you. That's it, Chairman.
Okay. Well, let me add, you know, I made this comment at the time that Johnson County is not known necessarily for its beaches. But I will say this, the beach at Shawnee Mission Lake Park is well-known by county and metro residents, so a great opening, and it was terrific to see all the people who came out and enjoyed Johnson County's beach. Is that it? Okay. Next item is legislative update. Ms. Green?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Cindy Green with County Manager's Office. I am actually, have guests here today that are going to do the legislative wrap-up for us, and that's our lobbyists that we have over in Topeka with boots on the ground every day in the Capitol, John Federico and Stephen Durst. And I do want to give a plug to thank them very much for the hard work that they've done this year, especially on our election commissioner bill. It was fabulous to, it's rare that a bill gets introduced and passed in the session that we are in favor of, and so I am very pleased that they were able to help us get that through this year, but I'm going to let them give you the full report, including the update on that bill. Thanks.
Very good. John and Stephen?
John and Stephen, thanks for being here this morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the update.
Chairman, I am John Federico, pleased to appear. This was our first session representing Johnson County. Interesting, and at times, a little overwhelming. We counted 255 bills that we were tracking for you. Of course, they were of varying interest to the county. You might find interesting that in total, for the 2018 legislative session, there were 573 bills introduced during the session and 118 signed into law. Federico Consultant consists of myself as the principal. This was my 25th legislative session. Stephen Durst, who joined me three years ago. I live in Topeka, he lives in Johnson County. We are both lawyers. Liz Sosa is our other full-time lobbyist. She lives out in Garden City and is with us during the legislative session, and brings contacts and relationships from the western part of the state. We also have on staff during the legislative session, five law clerks that we hire to help thoroughly monitor different committees on behalf of our clients. What that allows us to do, and with respect to Johnson County, there were times that we were in up to 20 different committee hearings on your behalf, listening to different bills, and debate on bills, testimony on bills, and votes on bills. It allows us to provide, back to Cindy, timely reports, almost in real time, a comprehensive report of what issue was just covered, who testified, and the resolution of that bill, if there was one. We hope that you found, and throughout the county, you found those to be very helpful getting them. And then, with respect to Cindy Green, it was just a delight to work with her, for someone who knows the process, knows the people, it was just really good. She serves you very well, and it was, it was nice to work with her. You should have in your possession in some form a 13-page comprehensive report that represents an overview of the 2018 legislative session that Stephen put together quite well. We'll hit the tops of the trees on some of the issues that were of primary importance to the county. We'll start with property tax issues and property tax lid. There were, was an abundance of conversation during the session on these two topics, both residential and commercial, with respect to appraisals, increasing property taxes, and there was minimal conversation about exemptions to the property tax lid. We hope that we can continue those conversations with the Chairman of both the House and Senate Tax Committee for the exemption piece, and I can say with great certainty that the number one issue in 2019 legislative session will be property taxes. So we expect to be busy representing you all. Moving on to capers funding, last year, there was an infusion of money into the system. This year, a bill popped up that ended up being of keen interest to Johnson County because if the bill was signed into law, it could represent up to a $2 million savings to the county. This was a bill that had to deal with adding correction officers for state prisons into the KP&amp;F system, and because of the calculations, it would, again, represent a significant savings to the county. That bill failed because county correction officers, wildlife and park officers, all wanted in on that bill, all wanted in on that savings, and they felt it needed more time and study. So that will be studied over the summer and fall by the pension committee, and we'll stay on top of that, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for Johnson County to weigh in on that issue, talk about its importance. Cindy mentioned the election commissioner bill. I will say modestly that it was good work by a variety of people. It was a tricky issue, but you'll see immediate benefit from having a little bit more control over the budget and personnel issues related to that office. I'll let Stephen talk about a couple of issues, and then I'll wrap up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm going to speak to two issues on your top five priority action list. The first one is the statewide expansion of Medicaid. There were really two efforts that happened this year as it relates to that issue. One, there was a hearing on the Senate side in the Senate Public Health and Welfare Committee. That bill was heard, it passed through committee, but that is as far as it got. It never got to the Senate floor for debate or a vote. The second effort that bears mentioning is there was an amendment made onto a bill on the House side that successfully made it on. There were several rules, challenges, and things like that, but it was successfully allowed, and eventually, it was voted down 56 to 66 in the House. So very different results than what we saw last year on this Medicaid expansion effort. The second issue I'll speak to is the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is part of your top five action priorities. This year, that came in the form of House sub for Senate Bill 391, sponsored by Senator John Schubel, and it would create the Joint Legislative Transportation Vision Task Force, which will, in essence, bring a group of individuals together, both lawmakers and people from trade groups, as well as appointees from the Kansas Association of Counties and the Kansas League of Municipalities. They'll come together and create what is essentially now the next T-Works program. So of significance for the county, I'd mentioned that the Association of Counties gets to appoint two individuals. One of those individuals is from a county that has a population of over 40,000 individuals. A couple of other issues that I'll discuss that were not part of the top five priorities, but were of keen interest to you all. The first one deals with our waiver populations. It was a bill that we dubbed the Background Check Bill. That is Senate sub for Senate sub for House Bill 2386. Essentially, this bill, which was passed in the final days of session, will streamline the background check process for those employees who wish to work with waiver populations. It enables Kansas to draw down a $3 million grant, the state, and it also brings the state in line with federal requirements and regulations. Of significance, this should reduce the time by which background checks are conducted. They used to take several weeks. They now should take anywhere from five to seven days, we're told by the department. That assumes that the system is up and running, and also that the department is fully staffed. So we really hope that that will help. We worked extremely hard on this issue, and we're happy that it made through. It was a two-year effort. In that same category, want to mention that the HCBS rate increase that was passed last year in the biannual budget was unchanged, so there was no change to that rate increase. The second issue I want to discuss is a bill dubbed the Senior Citizens Property Tax Deferral Act. This was introduced by Representative Tom Cox. This bill, you'll remember, it would allow those 65 and older to defer up to $2,500 in property taxes on their homestead property, which is subject to restrictions and qualifications. A lien would then be placed on the property for those deferred taxes. for those deferred taxes. The money would become payable back to the county upon death of the homeowner or the sale of the home. This bill was never granted a hearing. However, we have had several conversations with Representative Cox of Shawnee, who has said that he will continue to work with us, the county, to make sure that the bill is a good product and that everybody is happy with it. So, that is what I have. I'll turn it back over to John.
The last bill we'll talk about, we helped get passed and sign into law, was a broadband task force. And although it originally started out as an effort for rural Kansas, we'd made sure it was labeled a statewide broadband task force. And we made sure that not only the League of Municipalities, but the Association of Counties had a representative to serve on that task force. We're hoping that they report back to the legislature and do good work, make recommendations on how to get more broadband in more places. It was an opportunity for us to talk about that the needs of better broadband isn't reserved for rural parts of the state. There's plenty of urban areas that have needs. That's the last of the bills or the topics. Politics-wise, tomorrow at noon is the filing deadline. All 125 members of the House of Representatives are up for reelection. Right now, I think we've identified four Johnson County legislators that won't be seeking reelection. We'll continue to monitor right up until the deadline, provide a comprehensive overview. Back to Cindy, who will share with you with a little bit of a breakdown. You might make note of turnover in the legislature is very common. Prior to 2012, again, this is my 25th legislative session, turnover has always been about 20% to 25%. Since 2012, it's been anywhere from 35% to 45%. And that's significant for us, because these are new people coming in, new relationships that we try to forge. We spend an inordinate amount of time in the off-season, getting out, kind of crisscrossing the state, visiting with not only incumbent legislators on behalf of our clients, but also meeting new candidates and advising our clients that these are people that we feel are going to be successful in either the primary or the general election. Mr. Chairman, that's all we have. We're happy to stand for any questions. It's been helpful.
Thank you very much for that report. You mentioned a couple of items which are going to have to be higher on our list, I think, next session. You mentioned the issue about KP&amp;F. And a couple of the exemptions for the tax lid that we've been asking is mental health. You've seen some of the product that is going on in Johnson County, and the importance of that activity to residents. And then, the second one is capers, KP&amp;F, those type of pension obligations that we have no control over. Those are set by the state, and so, we must comply. And I think you're right. If additional personnel who now might be covered by capers become covered by KP&amp;F, that will be another significant obligation that we'll have to meet. The second one, I don't think, you're absolutely correct. Tax lid, property taxes are going to be a significant issue, probably during the campaign, as well as the session next year. And I appreciate Representative Cox's efforts to work on that issue. In some of the ideas that have been advanced, there are some constitutional questions as to whether they would comply. But, one issue that was mentioned, or I mentioned before the Senate Tax Committee, was expansion of the homestead exemption. And it seems to me, for those elderly, or those of a certain age or income level, that that homestead exemption is a, which is already in place, but very restrictive. Could be expanded and would be a fairly simple way to offer that kind of relief. So. Other questions? Well, John, thank you very much. I personally, and on behalf of the Commission, really appreciate your efforts this year. And so, we'll look forward to a continued relationship and future successes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
What, no picture?
All right. Next, we have Mr. Kleffner with an audit report concerning leadership business expense authorizations.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Ken Kleffner from Audit Services. This morning, I'd like to brief you on the results of a recently completed audit, which examined the approval of business expenses filed by Johnson County leaders. The audit was conducted under our Audit Follow-Up Program. And the specific audit that prompted this review was the county-wide review of purchase card use, which was published in December of 2016. If you recall, in that audit, we looked at the internal controls designed countywide to ensure successful operation of the P-card program. This review, the review I'm going to brief you on this morning, focuses on a small aspect of that design to see if it was operating as intended. The audit objective was to determine if business expenses incurred by county leaders were reviewed and approved by the appropriate authorized individual as defined by county policy and procedures. It was a limited scope audit. The audit scope focused on county leadership only. We did not review middle management or non-supervisory personnel. Again, the focus was on county leadership. We did not review the appropriateness of expenses being claimed, or the accuracy of the reimbursement. The methodology, we reviewed expense reimbursement reports for 43 county leaders, and we defined a county leader as a department director, an agency executive director, an elected or appointed official, or a program director of a major county program. We reviewed I-expense and P-card reimbursement requests, and approval notes, and other documentation, and we interviewed county leaders and consulted with TFM leadership. The audit results, of the 43 leaders that we identified and we reviewed, expense reports for nine leaders fell out as exceptions. They did not have one or more expense reports reviewed and approved by the correct individual. I believe these exceptions are due to a lack of awareness of county guidance. Now, let me put that phrase in some context, if I could, please. The policy is clear, in terms of who should approve, or who the authorized appropriate individual is. And generally speaking, it's the individual's supervisor. The other component of that guidance is behind-the-scenes. We have a system and structure in place to effectively and efficiently process these claims. And the other component is the support staff. Support staff exists at various levels in the organization to carry out these programs. So, what I'm trying to convey to you is that, under this term of county guidance, there are a lot of moving and interdependent parts to ensure program success. I think the most important takeaway from this slide, though, is that remedial action was taken while the audit was conducted, to make the necessary system modifications and procedural changes necessary to bring everything back into compliance. So, even though corrective action was taken during the audit, we did offer one recommendation to Treasury and Financial Management, and that was that they strengthen the procedural guidance targeted specifically at agency directors and court officials. Management concurred with the recommendation, and it is my understanding that they've drafted the suggested procedural changes. And I want to thank both Brent and Tom for supporting the audit recommendation.
So, before I close, I'd like to acknowledge Michelle Cleveland, who performed this audit. And with that, I'll welcome any questions you might have. Okay. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kleffner, thank you for your work. A little context, if you can. In some perspective, the findings were not extensive. They seemed to be fairly narrow, fairly procedural, and your recommendations make sense. But I was wondering, the context in your December 16 audit, that same group, how did we fare in December 16? Has there been a significant improvement, or is it about the same, or have we gotten worse?
We didn't look at it in '16. The '16 audit just looked at the control design entity-wide. Was it designed appropriately to produce the intended outcome?
So...
Now, we tested it.
We don't have a context. So, let me ask then the follow-up question of, over the last couple of years since you did the '16 audit, has TFM and the procedures that they put in place, have they caught and made corrections on similar missteps? And have there been improvements in those compensating controls?
That's probably a better question to ask Tom and Brent. I can tell you, though, in this review, we did notice, on more than one occasion, on multiple occasions, where expense reports were being returned back to the initiator, if you will, asking questions, tough questions.
By TFM staff?
Yes.
Okay.
In the accounts payable area.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I would simply add to that. I'm aware of a comeback from, that corrected per diem based upon the time of flight.
Right.
And so, somebody's examining a lot of information to make sure that expenses are correct.
Right.
You mentioned one thing, which used to exist for Commissioners. And I think I'm correct. Does anyone on this DAS Commissioners, we do not use the purchase cards, the P-cards, is that right?
I'm going to look at someone real quick. No?
No.
No.
Yeah, okay. I was sure that that practice had been terminated. So, okay. Other questions? All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Are there any other items?
No, sorry.
Evidently not. Okay. We'll turn to Commission comments. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind members of the DAS that tonight is the Night of Hope Session at Shawnee Mission Medical Center Rogers Conference. Our mental health professionals will be working with the community and talking about suicide prevention, suicide awareness. And we are all invited. It's from 5:30 to 7:30 this evening.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
Yes, I have one thing. Aaron Otto informed me before the meeting this morning, that he set up a time to tour the Kansas City Transit Authority facilities, including their simulator bus event that I went through to drive a bus, which was pretty entertaining. But anyway, that has been set up for next Thursday from 3:30 to approximately 4:45 PM. And if any Commissioners are interested in touring those facilities, please contact Aaron.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Osterhaus?
I'll echo Commissioner Ashcraft's comments. I hope everyone can make that Mental Health Summit tonight. And also, on Monday, will be the ceremonial signing of Senate Bill 375, which designates a portion of 690 Highway in memory of Master Deputy Brandon Collins. So, hopefully, you can make that. That's from 1:00 PM to 1:30 at the Sheriff's Operations Center. It's out in New Century, 27747 West 159th Street, New Century. And that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few items. On Saturday, as was stated earlier, was the ribbon-cutting for Shawnee Mission Park, the beach, which is the best beach, and the best park, and the best county, and the best state. And I was there, and it was attended beyond any wildest expectation that I had. There were people lined up, kids in swimsuits, ready to, as though we were having, it was a race to see who could get in first. And it was fun, and it's a nice facility. It's well-done, it's not overdone, it's proportionate scale, and it's a nice facility. Parks did a nice job on that one. On Monday, I attended in the oven, that was Monday, the Memorial Day Ceremony with Chairman Eilert. He and I stood there and sweated together. And it was a wonderful ceremony. Well done. The Lake Civic Band was incredible. They're really, really good. It's a huge band, too. It's the largest civic band in Kansas. I had no idea. The mayor told me that. On Tuesday, I toured the Santa Fe House, Johnson County Developmental Supports. I went out and looked at it in Gardner on 175th Street. It is amazing. It is folks who use the programming services of JCDS, but also suffer memory issues, Alzheimer's and other memory-related issues, reside there. And what they've done in the way of thinking forward on how they plan for flooring being consistent through the house, and all the flooring, the planks running in the same direction. And it's just, I'm a contractor, it's my job to think forward about things like that. But that never would have crossed my mind. And so, they went to that level of thought and planning. It was impressive. The house is wonderful. Got to visit with one of the residents there, who was very happy. It was his, he had gone to one of the Mexican restaurants, because I believe it was his birthday, and he had mentioned that he had cleaned his room, and he got free ice cream, and he was very excited about that. And so, we celebrated his free ice cream. And then, finally, on just a personal note, yesterday was my wedding anniversary, and my wife is right back there in the corner. And so, celebrated the 30th anniversary. Thank you.
Well, special congratulations to you.
How lucky am I.
Christie's patience and commitment. Congratulations, guys. That's neat.
Thank you.
I have one item. Last Wednesday, at the Kansas Association of Counties Board Meeting, Vice Chair Jim Allen was appointed as one of the representatives to the Transportation Task Force, representing Johnson County, the larger counties. And Max Dibble, who's president of the KAC from Phillipsburg, was the other appointee. And John mentioned the broadband bill. Commissioner Lon Pishney from Fannie County was appointed as representative for KAC to that group. That concludes our printed agenda. We are adjourned. We'll take a short recess and come back for agenda review for next week's meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.